Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Renee, can I have a roll call?
Ms. Williford, Mr. Parker.
Here.
Mr. McDaniel.
Here.
Ms. Byrd.
Here.
Mr. Beck.
Here.
Mr. Axton.
Here.
Mr. Jablonsky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Moving to our consent docket, starting with item one, consideration of approval, rejection amendment and/or postponement of the minutes of the April 14, 2022 Regular Planning Commission meeting. Does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent? Oh, do we have another one? Sorry. Sorry about that. All right. Sorry. Another one. Item two, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of COS-2122-13, consideration of a Norman Rule Certificate of Survey submitted by Brent and Nicole Wagner, Pollard and Whitehead Surveying, Inc. For Wagner states for 20.02 acres of property generally located near the northeast corner of 84th Avenue Northeast and Tecumseh Road. And short form plat, item three, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of SFP-2122-7, consideration of a short form plat submitted by Harbor Homes, Inc., Pollard and Whitehead Surveying, Inc., for Wilson Corner for 0.5804 acres of property generally located at the northeast corner of Pickard Avenue and Wilson Street. Does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket?
Yes.
Okay. Which item?
I have a couple of questions about number three. At the risk of getting Mr. Pollard mad at me or running his dinner, not for him.
Just before that, does any other member of the commission wish to remove any other items from the consent docket? Okay. Okay. So we will pull item three and move it to non-consent items then, correct? And then we would take a motion then for the remaining consent items, number one and two. I would take a motion to approve the remaining consent items, one and two.
So moved. Second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried six to zero.
Okay. Thank you. Moving to non-consent items, item number three, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of SFP-2122-7, consideration of a short form plat submitted by Harbor Homes, Inc., Pollard and Whitehead Surveying, Inc., for Wilson Corner for 0.5804 acres of property generally located on the northeast corner of Pickard Avenue and Wilson Street. Do we have a staff presentation? Okay. So any questions for staff?
For Ken, I think I can do that.
Do you have a question for staff anyway? Is it a question staff would answer?
Yes. Sorry, I'm not sure how to go about that. My real questions were, when I looked at this was how, what they were planning on building there, because the lots were so thin, 50 feet wide. And I looked in the whole neighborhood and the smallest lot I saw was 65 after that. So I was surprised that none of the neighbors had had a problem with it. So I didn't know there was, what was, how that happened, what was going on.
Why do you have that question? I don't understand.
It just didn't seem like it fit with the houses that were built around it.
As long as they meet our regulations for minimum lot width, then we're fine with it. In this case, 50 foot is the minimum lot width.
Okay. And there weren't any complaints from people, so?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right.
I actually have a question too for you. Can you tell me how far the closest park is? The reason I ask is, like my fellow commissioner says, this is a big decrease in the size of the lots. And so if people want access to green space, it's not going to be in their yard. So do you know where the closest parks are to this?
I personally don't know. Do you know, Jane?
It's not something I've looked at, but I would guess that it would be on the north side of Lindsay. It would be the, there's a school north, or we would be going southeast over toward Reeves. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm just not blank. I wasn't prepared for that one. But I'm sure that there is a neighborhood park in close vicinity there.
Just for confirmation, the application is fitting within the regular zoning code for the zoning on there?
Right.
Okay.
That was my only question, since it didn't sort of fit with the neighbors.
Is there an applicant presentation?
Will it?
Sure. Yeah. Okay. Come on up.
Tim Pollard with Pollard and Whitehead Surveying, representing the applicant. Again, this is what was asked for us to do. It's underneath the current zoning. So if, I believe in Oak Ridge, there are some lots that are 50 foot. Now, some of them have been adjusted out on the north side of that. But the 50 foot is what they was originally.
Well, if that's what they want.
They will still have to meet all the zoning and all the plating applications and the building codes and setbacks and the whole thing.
Yeah, it just looked like the houses that they put on there would be, kind of stand out from all the others, be kind of different. But we meet what we need to meet. It's fine by me.
I'm for higher density anyhow.
Are there any questions for the applicant that haven't already been addressed? Seeing none, are there any audience comments? Any other planning commission discussion? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to approve the item as presented?
So moved.
No, I'll second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted. Motion carried six to zero.
Moving to our next item number, I'm going to, unless anybody has any opposed, I'm going to read item four, five, and six together as one item. Item four, consideration of adoption, rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution number R2122-. Homes of Oklahoma LLC requests amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan for mixed-use designation to low-density residential designation for approximately 16.32 acres of property generally located north of East Imhoff Road and west of Oakhurst Avenue. Item number five, consideration of adoption, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2122-42, Lennar Homes of Oklahoma LLC requests rezoning from PUD planned unit development to PUD planned unit development for approximately 16.32 acres of property generally located on the north of Imhoff Road and west of Oakhurst Avenue. Item six, consideration of adoption, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2122-12, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Lennar Homes of Oklahoma LLC, Johnson and Associates, for the villages, a planned unit development for approximately 16.32 acres of property generally located north of East Imhoff Road and west of Oakhurst Avenue with a variance in the cul-de-sac length. And I would take the staff presentation. I'm getting faster, guys.
Colton Wayman, Planning Department. We have an application from Lennar Homes of Oklahoma, requesting to amend the Norman 2025 Land Use Plan from mixed-use designation to low-density residential designation at north, at the corner of northwest, at the northwest corner of Imhoff Road and Oakhurst Avenue. The subject tract is currently designated as mixed use. To the north is low-density residential, to the west, low-density residential, to the east, low-density residential and medium-density residential, to the south is office, and also to the south is industrial. And of course, they're requesting to change that to low-density residential. In addition to that, they're requesting to rezone from the current PUD planned unit development to a new PUD planned unit development. Again, it is currently PUD planned unit development, which allows for apartment and office uses, among others. To the north, it is zoned R1, to the west, A2 and I1, to the east, R1 and PUD, to the south, CO and I1. In terms of existing land use, it's currently vacant. To the west, it's vacant. To the north is our single-family homes, to the east, single-family homes and a vacant parcel. To the south is a business park that the subject tract surrounds. And then across Imhoff is the Hitachi facility. This is an aerial. It's currently vacant, as I just said, to the west vacant, east vacant, generally to the north is a single-family subdivision, to the south is that business park, and then across Imhoff is the Hitachi facility. This is the site development plan. They're proposing 109 single-family lots across approximately 16 acres with access, full access off of Oakhurst, and then emergency access off of Imhoff. This is a typical lot layout for the corner lot and for the non-corner lot. This is an open space exhibit. They're proposing opens, or common area, generally in the northeast portion of the parcel, along Imhoff Road, and then also along the western extent of the parcel. This is the preliminary plat. Here's some photos. This is from the Hitachi facility looking at the business park and the surrounding vacant land, which is the subject parcel. This is looking from the business park across at the Hitachi facility. This is at the business park looking generally north at the vacant subject parcel. And then this is off the corner of Imhoff and Oakhurst, looking at the subject parcel. And there was 0.52% protest within the notification area. Staff forwards this request for Norman 2025 Land Use Plan Amendment from mixed use to low-density residential as resolution R212211. Staff also forwards this request for rezoning as ordinance number O212242, as well as preliminary plat, PP212212, for consideration by the planning commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have a question. Was it clear? So I'm looking at the guidelines for a PUD, and one of them is provision for more usable and suitably located open space, recreation areas, or other common facilities, and so on. Is it clear where those recreation areas are? It was hard for me to tell from that map.
I don't think that they have identified amenity areas, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I see like detention ponds, and I see a common area. And I'll ask the developer if that's intended to be wooded, or bulldozed down and made into a grassy area. But that back area doesn't, doesn't look accessible. So I was trying to, to look at this and see what were the accessible areas.
The representative of the applicant has a presentation after this, and he's.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I take the applicant presentation.
Thank you, Men of Chair, Sean Rieger, representing the applicant in this case. I appreciate Colton's presentation. He showed a lot of slides I was going to show you, so I'll be a little bit briefer. I just wanted to go back one slide to the protest. The last time this tract was rezoned to the PUD that it is today was in 2012, and I was the attorney on that. And I could tell you, that was a battle. That was a shift in zoning from an office complex use that had failed from the 1970s, I think, 80s, that never got done except for the two front buildings. When that zoning came through in 2012, we were protested by Hitachi on the south, and, and we were protested on the north. Rick McKinney was on the project with Tom McHaleb, and we worked through significant revisions and work. But we won a supermajority vote on the city council that night to get this rezoned to multifamily, mixed-use apartment complexes, Colton said, apartment complex, office, church, I believe, childcare centers. So I just, I think it's important to note tonight that that is a stark difference from what this was in 2012, when we came through with a much more intense zoning than what you see tonight. So this is really a downzoning, and I don't know if that's why we don't have a significant protest tonight. I'm not sure. Hitachi was at the pre-development meeting. Mr. Allen Howard, who I know well, has been somebody that's always come to all the meetings for Hitachi. He was there. He's fully aware of this project, and they did not protest. And I don't see Mr. Allen here tonight. So I can only presume that Hitachi is okay with it. The neighborhood, we have one protest, and if you read that letter, I don't know if you did or not, but the letter says that they were told by a broker that this would be a field forever as open space, and that is just simply false. I feel sorry for the lady that bought the house on that pretense, because this has been zoned since 2012 as a mixed-use, two- and three-story apartment complex is what it has the PUD right now to do. So, so this is a significant downzoning, but it was never intended to be a field. It has been approved as much more intense than that all along. So let me breeze through some of these slides. Colton showed you a lot of this. You know the location. I would just say the density is about 6.7 homes per acre, which is really at the top end of R1, but it certainly is not multifamily, mixed, mixed-use, kind of high-density, 109 single-family homes. Just another point, the existing PUD is mixed-use apartments, office, really, it's apartment complexes, the PUD that got approved back when it was protested by Hitachi. And that was their protest that it was a more dense residential complex than, than they would have liked. That was 148 units approved back then at two and three stories is what the current PUD allows for. This is 109 units at one and two stories. So, so difference. I think Colton showed you this. Project Commissioner, to your question, there are open spaces across the bottom, which are 60-foot setbacks, if I can get this to work. So really, we kind of intend for that to be leisure space across the front. This is probably mostly left wooded, well, definitely mostly left wooded, and pond space. I don't know how much of that would be wet. It would be detention in the back. That's where it flows to. So, but we believe those would be recreation areas. I would hearken back to your question of an earlier applicant. There is a park north of this, and at Parks Board, there it is right there, right at the top. I forget the name of that park. I apologize. Oakhurst, maybe? I'm guessing. Park. At the Parks Board, that was discussed, actually. And the Parks Board, we were there that night just recently. They were touring their new park maintenance facility, and that question was discussed at some length. And the Park Board decided that that was well within proximity, that they were fine with Fianluw, and, and they felt that was appropriate at that time. So they voted for Fianluw as their recommendation to be the park solution there. Cover a couple other points. Colton, just to further, that gate on the left, that lower access point, those are what we call crash gates. There are not an entryway that anybody can use, but fire and emergency, as I've always understood them, I can't say I've ever done this, but I, I understand you can crash through these in event of emergency, and somebody can go right on through there, and they can take care of the situation if there's a problem. Otherwise, they stay closed. And so there's not an access point. That was important in 2012, when we did it for Hitachi, that they didn't want access flowing there. So intentionally, this project moved access to the side street, which also usually is what the Public Works likes us to do. They like us to, likes us to have access on the side streets. We did that. And we just put the emergency access out front on, on Hitachi. So that's why you see it that way. There you see the layout of lots. This is single-family homes. The reason for the PUD is because, similar to another question earlier, is we've, we've asked for thin lots. R1 standard is the minimum of 50 feet, I believe, for the width, 35 feet at the throat, and 6,000 square foot minimum area. This PUD requests 3,000 square foot minimum area with 30-foot widths. And so it is a different product. And I'll show you in just a moment what that looks like. I think Colton showed you this. And there's the typical lot layout. So.
Shotgun homes.
That's exactly what I told somebody earlier. I said shotgun homes, and they hadn't heard that term. But you, you remember that term, and. Right. I said it at Green Belt Commission, too, and I was glad somebody had heard it, too. So it was harkening back to some architecture days. But shotgun homes is kind of what you used to call homes like this, long, skinny homes. And this developer is called Lennar Homes. They are a large home building company around the nation. They have had significant success with this product in Texas, most notably in San Antonio, where they have been doing this product quite a bit. So, so they have high faith in this product. What does it look like? There it is. So that's the product. It is basically a two-story shotgun house. If you can look this, turn shotgun house up. It is a skinny, long product. It maintains the five-foot setbacks, so there's still a five-foot setback on each side of this product. And there is still a 19-foot driveway. We actually originally had children at 18, and staff went back and forth with us to make sure we had it at 19 to fit the standard. So it still fits, but gets us into a density that is lesser than what was approved before, but into a single-family home product. What we're finding in the industry is that people are wanting to get back into single-family homes, is what the, what the narrative is becoming, that all of the high-density things that got built, people are living in them, but they want to get back to their single-family home, particularly after COVID, is what you hear the home builders talk about. So this is a product to get back to that and get back to some single-family housing. I would mention that at Green Belt Commission, that was discussed, that it was appreciated that we're getting back to some single-family housing, and they appreciated that. So that is really it. Staff comments, I hope you've read them, but they basically said this is not out of character for this area. They said there's already traffic mitigation in place, and they recognize this is a downzoning, less intensity, and so traffic should not be a problem because of that. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Engineering with Johnson Associates, Tyler Musney is here as well. So happy to answer any questions you have. We thank you very much for your consideration.
Sean, you know what I'm going to ask.
I can only guess. Commissioner Beck.
Accessibility. I see two-story, which makes me suspicious about anything accessible unless there's a bedroom, bathroom on the first floor. And I've designed a house on a 40-foot lot that was accessible, but I'm wondering if they'd hire me to actually design all their houses and make them accessible.
I don't have an answer for you. I will be glad to ask.
Not that I'm out, not that I'm seeking a job.
I understand.
Accessibility is important, and, you know, I know there's no alleys on this thing, but having a garage up front just kills me, because that's what we're, you know, we're trying to get away from cars, not in Oklahoma. But you don't see the front door, because it's off to the side, you just see a garage door. And so we're going to have garage doors. Where if you have a two- or three-story apartment building, at least you have parking in front, and then you see a lot of storefronts and a lot of patios and stuff like that. So I don't know if there's anything that could fix that, but it sure makes it tough.
I'll issue it to them. Again, they've had significant success with this, so I think the market likes it. That's what I've been seeing and hearing, and I was really.
But you know, is there an actual bedroom on the first floor?
I do not know, but I'll, I'll find that out. Yeah. With, at the zoning level, we don't tend to submit floor plans or, or do that. So I, I don't think I've even seen a floor plan.
Okay.
Other questions for the applicant? Do you happen to know, since you had done the previous PUD, what the differences are in green space from the prior PUD to the current PUD?
I do not. I'm sorry?
From the prior PUD to the currently proposed PUD?
I'm sorry, I was asking.
I'm sorry. I was just saying, it's very close. You can see the areas back here where they've got the proposed detention pond and a lot of the areas that they've shown back there on the north side. Those were open space, common area type setup when it was the apartment complex.
They were. I'll tell you, I don't remember the commissioner, the percentage commissioner. I will tell you, PUD regs are 10 to 15% open space. This is at 23% open space overall, but this also importantly maintains the 65% impervious per lot. So we maintain that as well, the R1 standard of 65%. So this is significantly more than PUD ordinance requires, maintaining the R1 impervious.
Thank you. And I apologize that I didn't read this for this previously, but does the PUD allow for any manufactured or prefabricated structures?
No.
And I have seen some similar things to this going into some of the older neighborhoods in Oklahoma City also, with the garage frontage in the very deep lots and maximizing space. So some areas in Oklahoma City have also started to see some of these developments, usually one-off lots. I don't suppose you happen to know what a typical sales price of a home like this could potentially run with a freedom for market change?
I do not know, but I will tell you, perhaps getting editorial with you, but I would hope this would help our market. I would just be anecdotal with you. My wife is a Realtor, and I'll give you a story. It is still happening in Norman. Last week, she had a client who was looking at about $170,000 house in Norman. She's probably going to be mad I'm saying this, I guess, now that I think about it. But anyway, the house went under contract within hours, and her bid on behalf of the party she represented was $10,000 over list. The next day, she was told her bid was the second lowest of eight bidders, and the highest was far higher, all cash, within hours of list. So that is happening in Norman right now, across our town.
I've heard that story multiple times.
It's happening all over. I got another call from a broker who called me as an attorney, saying, Sean, what do I do? This was about two months ago. He said, I got a problem. I've got two, I've got, I think it was 15 offers, two of them, the offer, two separate offers, the price in their offer was $1,000 over the next highest offer. Two different ones, he said that. That's happening in Norman right now, still to this day, still as of last week. And so we desperately need more single-family housing in our town.
So how many square feet are these?
These go, I did hear them mention about 1,000 to 1,200 square feet, I think is what these run, I believe, Tyler, is about what they run, maybe a little bit higher.
Two bedrooms?
I think they get into multiple, yeah, two to three, I believe, yeah. Again, I haven't seen a floor plan, so I don't know how they lay out.
That's interesting.
I think what I'm trying to determine is, would you possibly characterize these as possibly fitting a lower-income housing type?
I don't think so, actually, based on the price that I think they want to seek. I would think this is going to be new construction. I'm just thinking new construction is expensive right now, so I don't know how you can really build new right now for...
Well, the pictures that you showed us wasn't low-income housing.
Right.
The images in the front, so.
Yeah, so I would not call it that, but that's not what I've been referred to it as.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
I have one more. So I've seen developers come, and they'll, instead of designating something as common area, they'll designate it as green space and permanently lock it in as part of the PUD. And I would have been a lot happier that big strip up at the top, it's not going to be accessible, to know that it's locked in with the PUD as a tree area. One of the complaints I've had before is that we aren't setting aside enough of the internal part of the city, you know, for wildlife, and that's a great place to have it and to have it protected so that somebody doesn't come in lazy with a bulldozer, you know, when they're cleaning up the rest of the land and take out too many trees when they don't need to, because...
Understood.
Just a comment.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving to audience comments, if there are any. Seeing none, planning commission discussion.
I'll say, I still think it's too far away from a park. I mean, I'm trying to imagine, I've got young kids, so does Kevin. We live in the same neighborhood, and, you know, our park is about as far away as I think anyone would want to walk from my house, and it's two blocks, and this looks like it's maybe four blocks from the park.
Well, in this case, then we need to start meeting with the Parks Board.
I agree.
Because obviously, our, the thinking process is two different processes. I mean, they approve that stuff, and I'm not sure we're in a position to change that stuff, so maybe there needs to be some kind of a meeting so that we can come to a little bit closer meeting of the minds as to what gets approved before it comes to us. Because I agree, you know, parks are important, if you will, young families.
Okay, thank you. If no other discussion, I would take a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second it.
And a vote.
You may vote.
Everyone has voted, and the motion carried five to one.
Thank you. Moving to our next nonconsent item, number seven, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2122-43. Hillel Foundation requests special use for a church, temple, or other place of worship for approximately 20,625 square feet of property located at 494 Elm Avenue. Staff presentation, please.
Laura Hoggett with the Planning Department. All right, we have an application from the Hillel Foundation for a special use for church, temple, or other place of worship at 494 Elm Avenue. It is currently zoned R3, which would remain the base zoning, just with a special use to bring their zoning into compliance. To the north is R3 with some R1, and then the rest surrounding it is R3. To the south is OU property, I think that's Catlet musical. So the Hillel Foundation has been here since the 1950s. They went to build a new building, so in order to get a building permit, they have to bring their zoning into compliance. So 1951 was when this building was built, which was before we even had a zoning code. So they're just here to bring it up to date, pretty much. This is the existing site with the building on the east side and parking on the west. Here's the front door.
So you're saying they want to tear this down, build a new building?
Yes. An applicant's here to go over that, too. So here's looking at the intersection of Elm and Boyd from the corner in the front, and then here's just kind of the front facade looking toward Catlet. And here's their proposed site plans, or they're putting the building pretty much back where it is now, leaving the parking the same. There will be some changes to the green space, but, I mean, it's about this. All right, and the applicant is here with the presentation, and then staff forwards this request for special use for a church, temple, or other place of worship, and proposed ordinance O-2122-43 to the planning commission for consideration.
Does anybody have any questions for staff? Feel free to go sit down. I would move to applicant presentation.
Thank you, commissioners. Matt Peacock with Peacock Design, representing the OU Hillel Foundation today. They are the Jewish student organization at the University of Oklahoma. While we're here, I think Ms. Hoggett laid this out pretty precisely. This was an allowable use when it was constructed back in 1951, and when the zoning code was updated in the 70s, they required it to be a special use. So now that's why we're here today, basically to ask for the Hillel to be able to continue what they've been doing over there for the past 70 years. And I'll go ahead and jump to Commissioner Beck's point. That building is in very poor condition, just to be quite frank. It has the original roof on it, so, which is 70 years old, has no air conditioning, never did. It is all masonry walls, so the ability to renovate it and, you know, carve it up in a different way is essentially not possible. So I'll go ahead and, Ms. Hoggett covered most everything I was going to, but I'll go ahead and click through this, and I see why people have problems with this. Okay, so yeah, this is the exterior of the building. Here is the existing zoning and the proposed zoning side by side. Again, it was allowable use back in the 50s, now requires special use. Site plan, proposed site plan, and I will say that this one is slightly different than the one that she showed. I didn't realize that I had sent an old site plan when I submitted the filing for this, so actually, all the trees that are along Boyd Street are to remain, and that strip of green space will stay there. So I thought that was pretty important to include. This is what the exterior of the building will look like. We really tried our best to pay homage to that mid-century modern look. That's why you see such a reliance on this breeze block here. That was a feature that was pretty indicative of projects back in that era. I'm going to, what you're seeing right here is actually the entrance to the building, and I'm going to go on the next slide and show you why that's important. The entire facade of the building is actually the Jewish holiday calendar, and so the openings and the breeze block and the window placement are there to signify and represent specific holidays on that calendar. And if you notice, in October, where Yom Kippur is and the High Holidays, that's the entrance of the building. So we located the most prominent feature of the building with the most prominent holiday of the calendar, and we thought that was really important. We're really excited, you know, the outreach and educational potential this project will offer. We really think that not only is this going to be great for the Jewish community at OU, but we really think this could be a gem and a jewel at the campus corner. And so with that, I thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So are you calling this the boutique Hillel?
We could say that.
I think they are now, Dave.
I'm impressed. I like the design.
I appreciate that.
Did you have an intern on your team do the breeze block? Is that a, is that a common theme that some of your team has done before for projects?
We've always wanted to do a big breeze block feature, and this one seems pretty appropriate, so we went all in on that.
Great. Any questions for the applicant?
I looked at this project about 10 years ago, and it was the best, so, you know, I think it's a historic building, but I think you, you're using good mid-century taste to link it up, so.
Appreciate you saying.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'll move to audience comments. Seeing none, planning commission discussion. Seeing none, I'd take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried six to zero.
Thank you very much, guys.
Moving to item number eight, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2122-44. Armstrong Bank and Lawson Retail Properties LLC requests rezoning from C1 Local Commercial District to C2 General Commercial District. 1.37 acres of property generally located at the southeast corner of State Highway 9 and 24th Avenue Southwest, also known as 2301 McCown Drive. This item has been withdrawn by the applicant. So moving to the miscellaneous discussion, does staff have any information for commissions such as regarding special meetings coming up?
Well, we don't have a special meeting. We've actually been able to get the item on the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which would be June 9th. So that's the evening that you will hear that item. I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Jablonsky's question, I believe it was you, about the park for the short-form plat, I think, that we were looking at tonight. I've been over here frantically texting other staff, and I wanted to make sure I got an answer for you before we left tonight. So that site is situated almost dead center between Lions Park and Walnut Park. Walnut Park is situated south of Imhoff, and Lions Park, as we know, is south of Main Street on Flood. So I wanted to get that answer for you before we left tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, the only comment I'd make to that is both of those parks are a long way away.
A long way away? Yeah, they are.
Do the commissioners have any other comments they'd like to make?
Wish I could zoom in from Zambia, but I guess not.
We'll see the pictures when you return.
Oh, yes. We'll see lots of pictures.
Any other comments from commissioners? If there's nothing else to come before the commission, I declare the meeting adjourned.
Was I supposed to sign my name or her name?
Probably yours. You're signing my, signing my name? Okay, and I need you to sign your name on here.
I will sign my own name, but on a different page, I guess.
I want to hear your story.